And get started here, I want to welcome you all to the special meeting, the governing body of Spring Hill, Kansas, on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. We don't have a pastor here available today, but if you guys would stand with me, I'll do the invocation. Unless you want to do it, Kristen?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you, God, for having us here today. We just ask you to be with all of us. There's a lot of sickness out there. We just ask you to be with our families, Lord. We just thank you for this day, and as we congregate, Lord, just help us to make the best decisions for our community and citizens, and we just thank you for today. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge. Madam Clerk, if you could please take the roll.
Here.
Mr. Van Houden.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Feeback.
Here.
Mr. Grant.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to consent agenda.
Um, pardon me, I think we need to delete.
Item number six.
Item six.
Yep.
Staff wasn't quite, that's not ready to go yet, so if we can.
Okay.
Delete that, please.
So we've got a motion to, or a request to delete number six. So I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move, so moved. I was gonna say, second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any questions? If not, I entertain a motion. Or Madam Clerk, please take.
Just a.
Just a.
Sorry, guys.
A regular one.
Yeah.
Simple vote.
Just a vote.
Ready?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You got me.
Carries five zero zero. Sorry, guys, the special meeting's got me all out of whack.
It's Monday.
Okay, next, we'll move on to formal council action, and the first item on the agenda is.
So I gotta do the consent.
What's that? Oh, yeah, sorry. Wow, guys. Next, we'll move on to consent agenda. These are items that staff considers to be routine maintenance. So are there any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So I approve, I, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Only. It was. Agenda was. Yeah, it was the original agenda, I know.
Yeah, move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Now, we'll move on to formal council action. First item on the agenda is consider approval of two thousand and twenty four encumbrances, and Mrs. Dunn, you have the floor. Wow.
Hey, what's happens?
See, it's not just me.
Yeah.
The microphone doesn't want to have a meeting.
I just heard something.
Yeah, I think you're on now.
Okay, good, sorry. I'm one of those people that have been sick, so I'm minimizing my exposure to other people, and I won't go touch the podium and stuff, but. So each year, we review purchasing decisions that we've made, and anything that isn't going to be completed here by the end of the year, we set encumbrances so that we spend for the things you approve this year in two thousand and twenty four's funds, and don't let them carry over into two thousand and twenty five. And so the items, you have the agenda review sheet. The items that we have on here are the radios for the EOP that were approved back on November fourteenth. Those pieces have started to come in, but it's not all here yet, so we need to encumber that. That's one that comes from the equipment fund, not the general fund, so that's not really a budgeted item, but we'll encumber it from that fund. And then we have three items for the police who have issued purchase orders for ammunition, some weapons and suppressors, and those things are on their way as well, just haven't gotten completed, so we'd like to encumber the amount of fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, of which thirteen thousand, one thirty-nine will come from the general fund and the police department budget. Can I answer any questions about it?
Yeah, I was kind of confused why the radios were on there since it's not part of the budget, but is it just because you want to have the twenty-four number on it?
It's so that we, sorry, encumbered in that fund and we don't spend it again.
Okay.
And that way, it's a clean cut for when it comes in.
Yeah, I thought we only did it for budgeted stuff, so that's why I was confused. But it's fine.
Sorry.
Any other questions or comments? Most of that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Just kind of designating where it's coming from and when, so if not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve encumbrances totaling fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars for the police equipment and emergency radios.
I second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash R dash twenty-two, designating financial depositories of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas, and Mrs. Dunn, you are still up.
This is a housekeeping meeting, as you can tell. Each year, we designate the depositories of the city, as well as the officers of the city and the signers on the accounts, and we issue that resolution to the banks, so they're aware of our operation, how it works. We did not make any changes to this resolution, and we are using the same local banks we have in the past, which is First Option Bank, State Bank of Spring Hill, and Tricentry Bank. We do currently have activity in both the State Bank of Spring Hill and First Options Bank, but Tricentry is an option if we needed it for some reason. This does not have anything to do with the RFP that we issued for banking. That is on the agenda for January ninth, and if it were to impact this, we would update it. I'm not expecting it to change this resolution. Can I answer any questions?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Yep. If there are not any questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash R twenty-two, designating financial depositories of the city of Spring Hill and directing and authorizing mayor or authorize city officers to execute related documents.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-four dash twenty, Spring Hill Municipal Code one dash four zero two on qualifications, and Mr. Lau has the floor. If not. Are you all on that line?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, loud and clear.
Cool, all right. Thank you for letting me phone in on this one, middle-of-the-day meeting. So as you are all aware, we will be posting the chief of police position for applicants soon, and the city is excited to get that plan going. Staff's looking forward to it. One thing that had come up in our last few meetings with council was the residency policy towards our chief of police. So the current residency, or the current city code requires our chief of police to live within thirty minutes of their departmental headquarters, which is the police station. Now is the time to consider if we want to change that before we post that job for applicants, because that, what our residency policy is, will absolutely affect the applicant pool, and people wanting to apply, not wanting to apply. We don't want to change something midstream on them or after they get hired, so. Um, we've prepared a couple alternative ordinances for you. You kind of have three choices here to talk over. One is to keep this policy the same, thirty minutes from the police department. Two would be to require residency with essentially an exceptions clause that would allow the mayor and the city administrator to jointly consider a request to not live within the city. There's some similar language in the city administrator's residency requirements. The reason that we're, that I suggested mayor and city administrator rather than the council as a whole, or the governing body as a whole, is to just try to narrow down the decision makers on that. The reporting chain for a police chief is to the city administrator, and they're appointed by the mayor with consent of council, so those are sort of the two individuals with the most oversight of that position. And I didn't want to have to turn this into a whole, you know, public meeting anytime we have a police chief request, an exception, if that's the route you all want to go. The second option would just be a residency policy with no possibility for an exception. In both policies, we have a twelve-month grace period to move into the city, which is fairly standard of other residency policies in general. Gives somebody a, you know, a whole year or two, find a place within the city that they feel comfortable moving to, if they were to be hired as the police chief, so. In your agenda review, should I look through, we've looked through as many of the cities in the metro area as we could, as far as who requires residency for a police chief. So on the Kansas side, you have Kansas City, Kansas, so the unified government requires it for their police chief. Lenexa and Alata also require that. And for what it's worth, Lenexa just requires all department heads, not just their police chief, to live within the city. Shawnee has a weird split where if it's an internal hire, they don't require residency, but external hires are up to the city manager, which we didn't put that in as an option here for you all to consider. It just seems a little unwieldy, although the spirit of it is the same with your first option here of, you know, the city administrator and mayor can jointly grant a request, if that's one, if that's the choice you make. On the Missouri side, so Kansas City, Missouri, Lee's Summit and Belton all require residency. Lee's Summit does the same thing Lenexa does, where it's all department directors. Grain Valley has a similar rule to us, which is twenty miles from the city, and then I just noted Gladstone's the only other city where I could find much discussion, because they removed theirs about nine years ago, so. Generally, no city of Spring Hill's size requires residency. That doesn't exclude you all from doing so, but we wanted to put this up for a discussion amongst yourselves, to kind of decide if you want to change and what change you want before we post this.
And just current, in case anybody's listening, just currently, it's thirty minutes, within thirty minutes of Spring Hill is what the current policy is.
So I've, I've really thought about this, because, you know, with the urgency of us getting it posted and stuff like that, I really feel that the police chief should live within the city limits. I understand I'm in an elected position, but I wouldn't be able to hold my position if I didn't live in the city. And so I understand, kind of, you know, where people are getting out with the applicants, but I think there's, there's a piece of this where, I, I just think that position should be required to live in the city. My thing on the twelve months, I think maybe that's where we give a little compromise. For example, if we had somebody that had a child in school, maybe it was a junior or a sophomore, and needed twenty-four months, maybe that could be something that we could talk about the timeframe, but. After much thought, I think, I think the person should definitely, there should be a residency requirement, excuse me, a residency requirement for this, so.
And I'm kind of torn on this. I see both sides of it. I think probably most of us see both sides of it. I see the benefit of living in our community, and I feel like they'd be, not that others in the past haven't, but I feel like they would be more a part of our community if they're here every day, living here, they're able to dive into everything, you know, e- even when they're not on the job. But I also see, you know, the other side of it, whereas, you know, if we keep it to where we have to live in here, if we have a really, really good candidate that might live ten miles away, but all of a sudden, they're not able, and they don't, you know, maybe just build a house or have young kids and don't want to move their kids out of whatever school district they're in, you know, that just, you know, rules out that person from being able to have a really good candidate possibility here when they only live, you know, maybe, maybe the same amount of distance away from another spot that might still be spread within the limits. And so I'm kind of torn on it. I still don't really know exactly what I would, what I'd go with. I'm fine with leaving it as it is, but I don't have a problem with changing it to city. I just, my only concern is that we might lose some, some good candidates if we were to change that.
So I'll present the opposite opinion, I guess. I don't, I will not support anything that requires city limit requirement. I'm open to discussion about a time or distance requirement and what that should be, any of those, but I think requiring within city limits is going to limit our candidate pool pretty significantly. And I think, given our geography and the amount of potential candidates that are near us, I, I don't feel like that is something that we should do. I think we're going to have a lot of good candidates that don't live in city limits, but are within that, you know, twenty-five to thirty mile or minute radius. And I, I, I don't think we should miss out on potentially some of those people. I understand the benefits of having any employee live within the city limits, and I think those are very, very valuable. I just think that those employees should be able to have that choice of whether they make that or not, and I've met people in my career that have chosen both ways, to live in their community and, and not to, and they have valid, good reasons both ways, so I think we should let them still have the freedom to do that.
I would rather have a really good, you know, the best candidate and them live fifteen miles away than settle for a lesser candidate that might happen to live in Spring Hill city limits. I guess that's my, my thought of it.
Yeah, I've thought about this a lot, too. This is a tough one. I think thirty minutes is probably pushing the echelon of, of what people want, if, you know, what the will of the people is, I think what the people want is for a, a local police chief. I, I think that, and also, on behalf of the future police chief, I think Chief Henson is going to be very hard to replace, so. I think she was able to toe the line, if you will, being outside city limits. I think if somebody else comes in and is thirty minutes away, I think it'll be tough for them. I think the public will be very, I just, I think being a cop's tough already, and I think that, that it'll be, not insurmountable, but I think it'll be very challenging for that person to acclimate to the community and be perceived as the police chief of Spring Hill, even if that is their title, I think it'll be a challenge for them to overcome that, if they're an Overland Park address, or within reason, you know, let's say KCK address, maybe. So there's three options, right, Spencer?
Yeah, keep it the same, the number one.
Yeah, so I, number two, I guess, is kind of the middle ground, right? So I guess.
Right, so that, the first option to change is your middle ground, where there's a residency policy in your city code, but you can waive it for the right reason, so. You know, Dr. Feeback mentioned, if someone's got a kid who's a junior in high school and they don't want to move for a couple of years, you could just waive it completely. That, in both options, the twelve months is a minimum, so either way, you could give somebody eighteen months or twenty-four, if you take your change, but by giving them the waiver, you're at least allowing applicants to come in and tell you, hey, you know, I live twenty-four minutes away, I'll be involved, here's why I think I can handle this job, not living in the city. It gives the city some leeway without, once you require it as a complete requirement, you're going to have people not apply.
Right.
The flexibility option might still deter some applicants, candidly. You know, no one wants to get their hopes up for a job and then get told they can't have it anyway, but that is your, that's kind of your middle ground option.
Yeah. I think that's what I'd be, I'd advocate for. I, I think that certainly the applicant pool is going to be significantly larger, it's going to be easier to find, it's easier, it'll be, it'll be, uh, the process will be better with more applicants to find the right person. And then, within reason of requirements for moving to Spring Hill, I think that's, that's what I'll advocate for.
I'd probably kind of lean a little, kind of, kind of like Jep, in a way. I think that the chief of police, I mean, they hold a very valuable role in the community, but I also see the idea of when the chief is off duty, you know, that having that way to kind of go back and to process what's going on in the community and process without necessarily having to constantly, quote unquote, be on duty. I think having that ability for the chief of police to give a valid reason on why they may not necessarily need to live in the city, whether that is due to a child or due to, you know, maybe their spouse has a obligation to their employer where they have to live in the city there, and it would be kind of a dual move. And so I kind of think that, yes, there is some value in having the chief of police in the community and being active and being a part of it. I also see the opportunity for selecting the best person. I think that's a little more valuable than necessarily having that person active and involved in the community. They're already going to be here forty to sixty hours a week anyways, as, as part of their police duties, and I just, I think I'd probably lean more towards that second option.
Or the first option, yeah.
Yeah.
I meant.
Option.
Technically, it's second. Number one, yeah.
The waiver option.
Yeah.
Waiver.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, I mean, you all can also construct an offer package and, and a deal with the chief of police that, you know, you can put an incentive in, or hey, we'll give you an extra five hundred dollars a year towards mileage and gas to come to some of these nighttime or evening events that might be a pain for you to drive into. I mean, you're welcome to do that if you want. You know, Ms. Jones might not appreciate me volunteering her to make that hiring process more difficult, but you can get creative if you don't want to change city code, but either way, you know, this is a bit different. Other cities have this as a, you know, a policy that's easier to change than a city code, so this one's just a bit more of a formal option.
Yeah, I'm, I was prob, I think I'm the one that brought this up, so, I mean, obviously, I'm the one who wants to have the chief live within city limits. Actually, would err on the side of going, saying all department leaders should be living in state limits. I think when you're requesting funding and things like that, you should kind of be on the hook for the same, same type of deal. I mean, obviously, our city administrator, we, he required him to live in town, and that's, you know, so I've always kind of thought that. Police, chief of police is kind of, I think, even more, it's more out in the community more than any of the other positions, and to have them live within the city limits, I think, is a, is a big plus. I know it was something that was changed for Chief Henson, because she tried, and at the time, there wasn't a whole lot of options. I think now, five and a half, six years later, we have a lot more options. There's a big range of housing, you know, I would think anybody should be able to find, I don't want to talk about the pay range, but the pay range is definitely better than it was six years ago. So I just don't really see, I mean, there's, it would have to be a really good cause. Like I said, I mean, I think he brought up really the one that I would even have consideration for, where they have a spouse or something that requires them to stay where they are. I don't really think there's any other real good reason. We have great schools. I mean, again, giving them an extra twelve months, I'm fine with that, but to say we're going to waive it completely, I think, is not probably the right way to go, so. You know, I, I think doing option one on here would be definitely a meeting in the middle for me, but I, I'm on this last option here, I think, is where I, I, I kind of would like to be, but again, it's going to be a group thing. I will say, if we go the other way, I would still rather it come to the council rather than just the, the, the mayor and city administrator, because at the end of the day, you know, I would, I would like all of us to make that decision, I think, if we're going to make it, but, you know, again, that's just my, my two cents on it.
Yeah, to be clear, I'm option one, I was going to choose it. I think that makes the most sense as well.
The waiver option?
Right.
Yeah. My only concern with the waiver option is that what a valid concern or a valid request is, is incredibly subjective.
Is incredibly subjective.
Exactly, that's kind of my concern with it.
And what I think is a valid concern, five other people might think is not.
Exactly, yeah. And so that's why I think if you have a group of people who make that decision rather than two. I know it's probably easier as far as, um. You know, but I, I also think if you have just two people, you could be like, hey, we really like you, we'll make an exception for you. And necessarily there's not good a reason there, you know, when there's only two people, there's no real oversight over it, so. That would be my concern with that particular one.
I think on the side of requiring them to live in city limits, I, I do think there is something to be said with buying into your community. If you live in your community, it's a lot easier to buy into it than, than if you live outside of it, so I do, I definitely do see some benefits of them living here. Um, but like I said earlier.
In my opinion, the right candidate would want to live here, I mean. That, that's just my opinion of it too.
Definitely agree with that, like ideally, we want them to live here, yeah, hundred percent, no doubt about that. I'm speaking from a municipal Parks and Recreation background. Where for the Parks and Recreation direct- director position in most municipalities, this is not a requirement. The ones that you frequently see it for are police chief, fire chief and city administrator, those are probably the most three common. I've seen people who are Parks and Rec directors that are extremely successful, that live in their community and also extremely successful that don't live in their community. So, I don't think that they, it, it doesn't give you an out, a guaranteed outcome. So that's, that's kind of why I'm falling where I am.
Well, and I think the police chief, our, our current police chief has, has proven that you can live outside the city and still buy into your community, and I mean, she's done an amazing job here. Um, but yeah, I, I still like, I mean, we're also, we're also talking and thinking, or at least I am thinking about the long term. And when somebody has to move here. So this is, this is the other side of it, I still see that, that side, but if somebody has to move here, buy a house here, move here, they're more likely to stay here for. A longer amount of time than if they're living outside the community, because they're buying into the community, they're moving their kids here if they have kids. You know, we're, we're hoping to have, I, I don't know about you guys, but I'm hoping to have a police chief that stays for many, many years. And the likelihood of them staying longer if they live here is probably pretty high.
I worry about the candidate pool.
That's, that's my biggest.
Specifically for this position, the types of personal situations that a lot of those candidates are gonna be in. Are probably gonna be ones where they don't want to move if they're within that thirty minutes, thirty miles-ish. That's, that's really where I'm really worried about.
And that's really my only worry is, I would, I would hate to sacrifice the best candidate because they might live. Five miles further than we want them to live.
But we're fixing a problem we don't have yet. Let's put it out there, we don't get good candidates, maybe we go back and say, hey, we, we didn't get the.
Like you could live on Hundred Seventy Fifth Street and not be eligible for this job, and that's. Seven miles away.
Really quick, I just want to make a couple points to clarify, on who would decide the exception? The reason I didn't suggest having the whole governing body is that you all as a whole really only have one employee and that's, that's Lane. Candidly, for, my first draft of this just left it up to the city administrator, because everybody else is under the city administrators. Kind of purview, it's sort of an hourglass shape, it's, you know, you all are at the top and then there's a bottleneck of your city administrator, and then everyone else reports to the, to the administrator. Because this would be a city code thing, I went ahead and added the mayor so that there was at least somebody who had been, you know, responsible to you all and a, a part of. The governing body. Um, we can modify this for the whole group, but I will say. You are getting into a, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen situation. Um, and you don't want to blur the lines of who is actually responsible for oversight of that position. You know, I wouldn't want to make sure every department head knows that they really only report to the city administrator. Um, and they don't have to keep the entire council happy to make sure they can stay in the house they're in right now. Last thing on candidate pool. Um, just, we've been through, I, I know Prairie Village will be posting theirs, they haven't already, because. Their chief is going to the same place our chief is going, um, and I think Roland Parks Chief has announced his retirement. Um, so, there will be some competition for Chief of Police positions in Johnson County. So, you know, just as a consideration going forward, if we can post and see what happens, um, that's, you know, maybe. They'll get the people who didn't get the other ones and come, come here instead, but I just, you know, this, this isn't a hiring in a vacuum situation, it's kind of an odd. Time for chiefs of police and all that.
I mean, I'll just say this, I can, I could probably get on board with the uh, with the waiver portion here. Um, but I would just say that I would hope that there would be some sort of consideration of asking our opinions before that decision's made. That would kind of be my request if we're gonna do that, like, hey, here's where we're at, what do you guys think, type thing, um.
I think when we have input, we, we usually are pretty free to give it. When issues come up, I, I think that's something this group does a really good job of. So, I, I don't have any worry about people giving input.
Just the input being taken.
Yeah, and like if we're gonna, if, if all of us with the CA are gonna decide on this job. Then do we need to apply that to all our department head job positions, you know, I think it just kind of opens a can of worms.
And that's.
And I also see like the mayor's seat is different than our seats. Um, so you could view this as that's a perk of the mayor position and a power of the mayor position, um, so I could interpret it that way too.
And ultimately, I'm the one that has to oversee it and, and, and so if. You know, if everybody's picking them and then I'm the only one that's overseeing them, you know, ultimately, then if it's. If it's a bad pick, then everybody's on the hook for it, and then that's fine. But, you know, I also have to, being the one to oversee it, I have to take the blame too if there's an issue, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with either way, um, I think this is the way it has been done, so, and I think it's worked. Uh, I do think you get too many people in there, not that I don't obviously value, and I would listen to any one of you guys, say, you know, you guys give me opinions, and I think you guys. Like you said earlier, I think everybody's pretty good at, you know, I haven't known you as long, but everybody's pretty good about giving you their opinion and what they think about. A major decision when we make it, and I don't think we ever take those lightly and just like, ah, I'm gonna do what I want to do no matter what.
There's, I mean. If the CA and the mayor together made a decision that I didn't agree with, they're, they're definitely gonna hear my side of it. Undoubtedly. But I also can live with that system and be okay with them making a choice that's not mine.
And I, I'm feel pretty confidently that if, you know, four of the five of you came to me and said, hey. I don't think this is a good candidate, I don't feel like Lane and I both would be like, ah, we don't care what you guys think, we think it's the best candidate, so we're gonna plow forward. I don't feel like we operate that way.
I agree.
Maybe you two, but we're also, yeah, that's, I'm just, I, I'm thinking long term. But, yeah, no, I mean, like I said, if that's where everybody's at, I could get on board with that. Um, I just think that we need to have the baseline of, hey, you need to move to the city. If you have a really, really good reason, we'll consider it, but, you know. I hope that we, we keep it at that where it's a, the exception, not the rule type thing. It's Ryan.
So we leaning towards option one within the document?
That's where I'm willing to go, so I can make a motion for that, and then you guys just let me know.
Are we all good with that?
That's where I'm at.
Without any, with no adjustments to what's written in here?
No, I think it sounds like that, uh, everybody's okay with that.
I'm, I'm good with that.
How do you want me to say it?
Can I, I need to ask the city attorney a question, if this will be a vote of the city council or the governing body?
Same as any other ordinance would be that, that same procedure, so I think. Roll call.
Roll call, or ordinance is usually everybody, isn't it?
Yeah, so. Everyone roll call and for whoever's making the motion, you can, when you move to approve, I mean, it's ordinance twenty four twenty, so as. Listed on that staff report, you are welcome to at the end clarify that this is the exception option.
Do you want me to read the whole, the whole thing, or just the accept, or just say the exception option?
Um, why don't we do the whole thing? Hold ordinance name and then say this is the exception option at the end.
Okay, got it.
Just so there's no confusion.
Yeah, alright, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty and ordinance amending article four, chapter one of this. Of the Spring Hill Municipal Code relating to the residency requirement for the chief of police. The option one, option one requires residency of the chief of police within a reasonable period of time, setting twelve months as the minimum period. However, this option allows the mayor and city administrator to jointly consider a request of a chief not to live within the city upon good cause shown by the chief of police. Known as the exception option.
Second.
Got a motion, second, is there any further discussion?
I, I do, actually. I just thought about this. So. Then can we put a maximum, if there is an exception to it, can we put a maximum of? Like, how, how close they actually have to live? Like, if there's an exception granted, they can't move, but they live in Kansas City, Missouri.
I think that would be part of the consideration for the exception. You know, like, hey, I mean. My, my exception would be more around the fact of like. I live right outside city limits.
I think that would be part of the subjective part of it.
I think.
Thirty-one miles too much?
I say, I, I think I'm. Maybe speaking for everybody, maybe not, but if somebody was from Kansas City, Missouri, I think, I, I, I don't think that that would be acceptable.
I just want to make sure before I like prove, you know.
No, yeah, to, to me, when you make that exception, it takes everything into consideration, and that's where, you know. I'd probably be more apt to say it's okay if somebody lived like at. Two hundred and thirty-first and Victory and it's right outside city limits, like, okay, we're not gonna make you move a block in. You know, that, that's where to me, that should probably come into play more than, oh, I just, I like where I live, I don't want to move, I don't care.
Guys, that, the action that we have the motion on, if an exception cannot live within the city is granted. The city code would still require them to reside within thirty minutes drive of their department headquarters.
So there's a blanket fallback.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, Spencer.
No, I should have brought that up earlier, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your.
No, you're good.
I just had to.
No, we got that, I mean, we had comment time.
That's why I asked if, any further comments.
Alright, are there any further discussions? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Van Houten?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. V备?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, ordinance. Twenty twenty four dash twenty passes six zero zero.
Thank you very much. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, because we, yep, so moved.
We axed the other. Got a motion, second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero, have a great night everybody and happy new year.